On Monday, I found this out myself when I looked at the school website. Sixteen students were diagnosed with COVID on Monday. This morning I asked Lindy, do we know where they came from? And six were from sports, no, four were from sports, six were three family groupings, and the rest were miscellaneous ones. I know that FedHoc today closed for two days to clean out their whole school for five total. They're taking advantage of the three-day weekend. I have kids who play sports. His third basketball game with FedHoc was canceled. So I know FedHoc is getting hit. And at a basic level, when the governor has to call in the National Guard, I believe that we have a responsibility to do what we can to make their job as easy and short as possible. To be sure, the National Guard is not providing direct medical care because that's not their job. They're supporting the people. But I don't know what about an emergency, this isn't enough for us to ask people to put on a mask that they did all of last year in order to see their kids play sports, do band stuff. I don't know if FFA has any meetings or anything, and people here. It would end in a month, and that's why I think that we on the board at least have to discuss it, perhaps briefly, and figure out what we think is best for our community. And Lindy, and I found out after I submitted the information that Lindy had met with Dr. Gaskell, and he had additional information as well. So I just wanted to have us talk about it, get that information, because we have time to stop the big sicknesses that happen. And we're starting to see our students get sicker and sicker. So, done.
Lindy, do you want to share your additional information?
Today, I did have a meeting with Dr. Gaskell, and we talked about the current COVID levels. Federal Hawking closed for the rest of this week, not due to lots of cases but lack of staffing. So they have one building, there's a lot of employees out, and instead of just closing the one building, the superintendent chose to close the whole district down until next Tuesday, give them a long weekend. While speaking with Dr. Gaskell, the stress level is not there on the hospitals right now. There are empty beds in the hospitals. They are not transporting patients to other hospitals to accommodate. COVID levels are on the rise, they are up, but it is the Omicron variant that is going through our county right now and the state. People are getting sick quickly, but the symptoms are much, much more milder. All cases in the ICU currently are unvaccinated people. We do have a masking plan policy in place. It's up to the board if they want to keep what they have in place or change. And I will continue to meet with Dr. Gaskell, and he will let me know when there is more stress on the hospitals. But currently, the emergency department, on a normal year, they see about 100 patients a day, and that's where they're at now. They're seeing what they normally see.
My big concern about making a requirement at this time is I don't have enough information about the topic. My other concerns are there's no requirement to attend extracurriculars. There is also, I don't know of any documentation of any super-spreader events in such. Maybe there's some out there, I don't know. I haven't had the time to look at it, so I would not be in favor of looking in that direction at this time without that information.
Okay.
Well, then we have to vote? No, it was just a discussion, so we're good.
Motion was made, and it was seconded.
Motion for a discussion.
Just for discussion?
Yeah. And like, we can vote to make it and vote if we'd like, but the motion was for a discussion about.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I got what you're saying. Yep, because Lucy worded it, she would like to discuss.
We don't have any board reports, and so we have public participation on non-agenda items. Ms. Ball, would you like to continue?
I'll go first.
Oh, you get started, I just wanted to make sure you knew that this is that time. And as you come up, please state your name.
I'm Mike Wagner. I've lived in the community for nearly eight, 20 years. I was not going to get up to speak, I actually put the letter together yesterday, and then a couple of my friends thought that I should read this letter to you. That way, I guess, it would on record, it needs to be transcribed. So those of you that know me, I'm sorry if I bored you for a minute. Those of you that I don't know, I'm sorry if I bored you. I thought in April I was done with this kind of stuff, but here we go. A few days ago, a community member called me with the news of Lindy Douglas was going to be non-renewed superintendent of the schools. Although I have not been agreement with some of the board decisions made in the past few years, I was shocked with the news. I've been the education field for several years, and actually taught my first year at Alexander Middle School in New Orleans, and moved to the high school level in Benton. I've taught middle school, high school, elementary, special ed, as a special ed teacher, or an intervention specialist these days they call it. I've been a high school assistant principal, middle school principal, district special education director, retired last April as assistant superintendent. I think I got my papers back there. This news caused me to look at Alexander School for the past seven or eight years. I'm not sure if you're aware of what you've got, but you've had your students through the district make significant progress. And I think that anybody that says grand for the kids, that's the bottom line. Under, Ms. Douglas and your district and building staff, this is Lindy, this is the team, this is everybody from here to the people that came and called, to teachers in classrooms, the bus drivers. So your district went from high support in 2013 to independent for the past three years. This does not happen without strong leaders and key positions. 2018 and 19, before the surge of COVID presented itself, your school was above the state average on 18 and 21 indicators, the highest in Athens County. Again, I don't know if you're aware of that. Your graduation rate has increased each year but one since 2013. Your school has consistently scored As and Bs in student progress, no small feat. Again, we say we're in for the kids, evidently Ms. Douglas, as well as many others, walk the walk. COVID's been a demon when it comes to the educational front for many districts and superintendents. It appears it will continue to be on the horizon for some time to come. I can tell you the number of times we, at Benton County, reached out to Ms. Douglas to see what their plans were, as have surrounding schools, to see what their plans were, were the number of times Ms. Douglas reached out to us. The whole epidemic has been about helping and being good neighbors to her educational peers. Ms. Douglas has been an outstanding representative for and of Alexander School District throughout the entire health pandemic, and has spent countless hours making sure your students received the best service they could under the circumstances. I'm not a ready public speaker, just to tell you.
You're doing fine.
I asked Ms. Douglas to share her evaluations with me, which she did. She didn't have to, and I was surprised to see how good they were with this non-renewal pending, except for the 2021 evaluation, which reflected a lot of stress and many problems for administrators, not just here, but all over the state. I asked Ms. Douglas if the board completed a second evaluation. As for the 20 years of doing this, usually if we have a less than stellar evaluation, we do a second one and help that person get better. And she answered me, no. I asked the board to put into place improvement plans to help her get better, or to address what she felt were the weak parts, which I don't know what they are, but I'm going to ask you. I asked the board to put that into place, again, she answered no. She did tell me she'd requested goals from the board, had requested goals. If she felt that she was weak somewhere, I think she wanted to know where it was and ask for help. And she could, she did not get those goals. As a supervisor or employee, if you will, I've always felt it's my duty to help employees, teachers, support staff become the best they can be. This part seems to be missing from the board. Of course, that's just my opinion, but I fail to recognize any grievous errors on the part of Ms. Douglas, certainly not worthy of renewal. In closing, I would like to ask for specific reasons why I really struggle to find them. I know you're not going to give me that, and that's fine, but I want you to think about the reasons. I asked that you go into executive session to discuss this issue, go out and do some real soul searching as to where your district is right now compared to where it was seven or eight years ago. School boards aren't meant to work, the school boards are meant to work for students, parents, the community, and staff, and of their respective histories. I truly hope, without being accusatory, each one of you are walking the walk and not making any part of this issue personally. This is an issue I believe to be at least tabled, to have a rethought to allow more community input, as you still have time to do so before the window of non-renewal poses. As I went over the progress the district's made, even in the light of an unheard-of worldwide epidemic, I kept thinking, I'm glad my granddaughters attended and attended Alexander Schools. One graduated last year and attends a high school, or one graduated last year and one attends a high school. My wife and I support the district, more in the past when our sons were at school, but now, we've always maintained a sense of pride and community in school. Finally, I would ask that, I would ask that you would, as a school board, discuss this from progress, faith, and take into consideration the events surrounding education for the last year and a half. I will stay at the school till after your executive session, if you have comments you want to talk to me. And a couple other things. During this time, there are superintendents, assistant superintendents, principals, everybody's struggling. There's no precedent, there's no agenda, there's no directions on how to handle what's going on. I think a lot of the information in this board meeting is coming the wrong direction, it shouldn't be coming from the superintendent to the board. You could probably get somebody to come in and fill that hole if you non-renew that thing, but you're going to have a hell of a time getting somebody that can do what she's doing, starting with that hole that's already done. I prepared this as a letter, I wasn't going to get up there and read this, but like I said, a couple of people thought I should. I'm not very good at that, but I did. I apologize for reaching. And all I ask as a community member is, does you take me serious? Do you take her serious? Do you take the kids in the district serious? Because personal issues can't come into these things, and it can't work at all, it never will. I know a lot of these people here, probably some of them stand there laughing at me under their breath, I mean, I think it's a little different. But they know that I believe in what I say, and if I don't believe in something, I don't say it. And I thank you guys, you can take this into consideration, just basically walk the walk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kim Kelly. I am, I have two children who have graduated from this district, one born west in Athens Before Lindy Douglas took over superintendent of Alexander Schools, the district was on academic emergency with the Ohio Department of Education. During Lindy's 80 years of leadership, she has brought the district to the highest state level of designation of independent, and has been able to maintain that level. Let's review the statistics. State assessment data from 2018 to 2019 shows that Alexander Elementary School received the highest rating of all county elementary schools. In addition, the Alexander High School received the highest rating of all schools in Athens, Vegas, Hawking, and Benton County. The graduation rate has increased over the past eight years to 96.4%. Lindy worked with the governor's office on student wellness and success. She has presented at the Capitol Conference, spoke before the Ohio Department of Education, the National Conference on Rural Education, and presented during subcommittee hearings concerning school funding. Lindy Douglas and Alexander Schools were featured in the PBS documentary titled Healthy Students Equals Strong Learners. Only three schools in Athens were chosen, or three schools in Ohio were chosen for this film. I have the privilege of attending the premiere at Children's Hospital, along with several hundred other educators across the state. PBS showed this film all across the United States. Alexander Schools received the District of Momentum Award in 2017 to 2019 from the Ohio Department of Education. Alexander was listed in the U.S. News and World Report, 100 Best High Schools in America for 2017, 2019, and 2020. Alexander received the College Success Award in 2019. Alexander also received the School Safety Award from the Athens County Commissioners. Over 20 schools have visited the Alexander campus to learn about our Whole Child Wellness Program in order to duplicate that in their own districts. Lindy has trained the state support team, Region 15, on the Whole Child Wellness Program. I have a letter of recommendation from Heather Wolf, superintendent of the Athens Medical Education Center, recommending the rehiring of Lindy. I have an email dated November 1st from Sarah Helbridge, interim dean of the Gladys W. and David H. Patton College of Education. This email details the visit of members of Patton College Dean's Circle of Engagement to the Alexander Elementary campus to see firsthand the work of their teacher candidates in the field. One of the dean's staff, the principal in northeastern Ohio, commented how valuable the sensory room was, must be for young Alexander students at Alexander. I would love to have that in your schools. Mrs. Helbridge also had a chance to meet with one of the school's security officers and learn how their presence in the building is approached in a positive way for students, one is intended to foster safety and engagement rather than fear. This data shows that we have a successful district under the current leadership. Josh Braddock and Lucy, who have repeatedly made public comments that you don't support the superintendent and you have no intentions of renewing her contract. You told the boys the comments you made during previous school board meetings show a lack of respect and professionalism on your part towards the superintendent. All board members ran on a platform of transparency. The community members present, and those online, and the Athens Messenger reporter would like to know why you are not renewing Mrs. Douglas's contract. You represent us, and you expect to have our opinion heard. The most important responsibility of the school board is to work with the community to improve student achievement in the local bulk of schools. You are to serve as an advisory board to the superintendent as it pertains to vision, structure, and accountability. Every decision a school board member makes must be for the best interest of the children. The data shows that the best interest of students of this district is to retain Mrs. Douglas as superintendent of the schools. Thank you.
School board members, good evening. I'm Claudia Taylor, my husband's direct. We are both retirees. I retired just 32 years, just at the high department now, out in the cities. We've both been driving school buses out here, probably over 10 years for him and me, not quite that long. We're both graduates of Alexander High School. I'm currently the O.A.G.S.C. union president here at the school. First of all, I'd like to commend the school board members and Lindy for their work and their willingness during the pandemic to listen to the concerns of the employees, parents, and the community members. I come before you tonight to ask that you renew the contract of superintendent Douglas. I did not know the superintendent before I became an employee, and then once I became the union president and started meeting with her over contract issues and staff issues, I can tell you that superintendent Douglas's top priority is her students. Her next priority is her staff. She is very compassionate to her students and to the staff, but also expects the staff to make the students their priority. She and I have not always agreed on issues, but we have always respectfully agreed to this break. I have very seldom had to call and make appointment with Lindy in advance. Her words have always been open to me, but I feel it has to all of us now. She is an Alexander graduate and is sincerely invested in this school and community, and most of all, understands the needs of our students in southeastern Ohio. I believe that replacing superintendent Douglas would be a poor decision and detrimental to our students and the community, and I urge you to renew superintendent Douglas's contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Bright, my wife is Karen. I'm sort of an outsider because I came here in 1977. At least where I came from, you had to be five or six generations, and I don't expect it any different here, but we've embraced this community and just love it, it got me to participate in a lot of different things, even the school bond tax levy that I got to use two weeks vacation to go door-to-door campaigning to celebrate that at a time to look over. But this is what's in my head, and it's also what's on our part. Lindy has successfully navigated an unprecedented growth of student enrollment in Alexander School District and still is able to meet or exceed state standards. She's doing this under a total economic disadvantage percentage of the total in the 80 percentiles or so, it's been floating around, but that's a very big challenge to meet the guidelines. She has done it, but this staff has done it too. I'm not denying any committee else that all participated and made this happen. She's confronted the COVID issue and that challenge. She's very conscious of the economic consequences. She came to the FFA alumni and the FFA group to help build providers, try to save money, keep our kids safe as they could, and we even had people from Hawking, uh, FedHOP, FFA alumni come here to help build out there the shop. And that's very money-conscious and also thinking about our kids. The recreational center was visionary for our community and a fulfillment of the needs of our students athletically and also for exercise classrooms. Again, this facility can aid in emergency preparedness for tests. I hope we never need COVID stairs, and I'm glad the stairs are included in the number. Lindy is a known quantity that has demonstrated exemplary service to this community. Lindy is one for and with this community. Thank you very much.
One other thing I wish to you, but I don't have a letter, but I have some notes. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sally Ball. I started teaching here in 1966, when the building first opened, before some of you were even born. So I've been involved in this school system for 55 years, and still involved. I mean, I do sell tickets at Colored. And I do come to board meetings, and you know, this has, to me, been a great school system, the whole time I've been involved with this system. I had somebody ask once, why don't you go to Athens? I didn't want to go to Athens, but I wanted to stay here. Somebody's already mentioned the awards that we've gotten since Lindy's been here. We've gone up in the state ratings, which I think is tremendous. Weren't we the highest in the last state rating of the whole county, which I think is great? My big question is why? Why we're at this point to get rid of Lindy? I think some of your board members ran with the idea of getting rid of some of the employees in the school system. I don't know why, that's why I asked that big question of why. I can see reactions right sitting here in the board meeting, how some of you look at each other, the daggers that have been given, not only to Lindy, to Erin, and to other school board members. We sit here, Roy and Jerry and I, since we're in all board meetings, and we see that. I've had some community people say, the reason they want to get rid of her, she's not male, female superintendent instead of a male. Some things she's been blamed for, it's not been her fault. That building sitting out there started before Lindy was ever here, but she's taken the front of some of the things about that school building, and some of the other things. Sometimes in hiring people, it's not Lindy that's out here interviewing, or not interviewing, out here evaluating all the teachers, it's the principals. Then she takes the recommendation of the principals. But she's blamed if somebody isn't retired. I know it's been a difficult two years. Lindy has worked with other superintendents in the district. I talked to Nelsonville Superintendent yesterday because I happen to know him, I don't know the other superintendent, and they've worked together in the plans of what to do, along with Dr. Gaskell and the Health Department, what to do during this pandemic. to do along with Dr. Gaskell and the Health Department, what to do during this pandemic. And again, as a former employee and a member of the community, I've lived here in this community 47 years now. I think she's done a good job. I've known all the superintendents. I've known all the principals here. When I was hired here, the superintendent came down off the roof of the building to interview me. That was a kind superintendent, Mr. Lor, if anybody remembers Mr. Lor. And again, I don't work here except I can give it, which I've done for acting, I'll tell you how many years. I do have some family members who are employed in this school district, and of course I have many, many former students, including Lindy. And this has been a great school system. I hate to see it go downhill. We're doing well academically. We're holding our heads up, right hiring as far as financially. I think what we need to do is think of what we're doing for the kids, not personal things that we have in mind about this school district. I heard that in the last two years, we've lost 20% of the superintendents in the state of Ohio. So it's not going to be easy to get a new superintendent because who's going to come to Southern Ohio where you can go to Northern Ohio and get a lot more money if you can get a town here? When I started here, we had no contracts. We had no teachers association. We had no insurance. And we've come a long way in the 55 years we've been here. We need to continue going in the right direction. And I think board members need to really think about this and what has happened with the kids and our school system as far as Lindy.
Okay, I think if anybody knows me, my name's Jerry Crowe, and I know a lot of people. I've been here for a long time. I've met a lot of superintendents and principals, and I've never heard any of them say anything bad about Lindy. And I think right now, all I got to say is I prefer everybody saying what they did. I think I should offer her a contract right now and blow it on her. That's all I got to say.
I was in here for a couple months. I was like, "You're there with Russ." Sorry. Russ Norris. I wasn't planning on coming up and talking about it, but after listening to a lot of people give praise about Lindy and the administration, the principals and the teachers, which are all stats and facts, and it makes me wonder, coming back to what Mrs. Ball said, why? Why are we at this point? I mean, we're not getting a report from the board. So I think it's very important, as you go into executive session, that you come out with an answer to the buffer. A list of why you're not renewing the contract already. Giving them specific detail of why there are failures going on that have not been improved, that you have given her specific instructions as to why these need to be done and where she's failing. If you can't do that within a 15-minute period of an executive meeting, then you have some very serious problems going on with the board. Because everything that we're hearing are the amazing things that this administration is doing. And I understand it's just not Lindy, it's just not the principals, but it's also the teachers and everybody else that's involved. So I'm asking you, why? Going back to Mrs. Ball's question, why? And please do not delay doing this. Conflict delayed is conflict multiplied. If you kick this ball down to the next month, and we'll just wait to, you are making the situation worse. Please come out of that meeting and have answers to the buffer. Thank you.
I'm a less learned fellow, and I'd rather have it beautiful than be. But I've seen and been somewhat aware of what Lindy has done. As you probably know, major contributor to the art. And I get calls, emails all the time from friends in other districts as to how lucky we are to have that building and how much it's being used. And I can tell you that if she's not renewed for petty reasons, as all I hear, that's it. You people are going to be responsible for the volunteer health that's been involved in this district for years. You're going to destroy it. Next thing they're going to destroy, in my opinion, if you're going to need a levy in the last few, next few years, the chaos that's being created is going to destroy it, and the chance of that. Because, as you may or may not know, and I suspect you know, the district has about a million and a half dollars committed. They'll never pay that. They'll be paid by the people that are leasing it, but they aren't committed for that amount. And I understand that that building is appraised for $6.2 million. Now, any businessman that can pull off a deal like that is pretty impressive. And I can assure you, I gave some free major money, and one of the main reasons I did it because I've been out. I've supported this district for 40 years. I was on the school board for 16. And I'll tell you, this attitude is going to destroy all that. There are plenty of people right here that have done a lot of free work for this district. With this kind of petty stuff, you're going to have to put a stop to all of it, and it's really not a harm to this district. And as you all heard, this district has come a long way. And I lived through it from about 1980. I was on the board for 16 years, and I've seen what petty, I'll call it crap, and that's not a very pleasant word, but I've seen what it does, and it has no place on the school board about 10 seconds. Right?
So at this time, I am making motion for executive session for the employment dismissal, discipline, promotion to motion, or compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an official, employee, or official.
I can hear you so much better when you face up. Because it's just like...
It's hard to leave, but I'm...
Well, maybe hold it out here. I don't have a microphone, but we can hear you over.
I make a motion to enter executive session.
Seconded.
Before we vote, can we discuss anything else after executive session? Given the agenda and what the people...
You can discuss anything you want.
You can say with action.
Well, I mean, do we have to amend the agenda since we've already voted on it and it's not part of the agenda? I don't, I'm trying to understand the process, our process. Can, when we come out of executive session, are we done?
If we have action to make, we can, out of executive session, if we have action to take, we can do that.
You can say with action. And that...
Okay. I just want to reserve the right to take action if necessary. How's that? Okay. Thank you.
Let me take the role. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Edis?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Just announced the next meeting, which will be the second Wednesday of February. And adjournment.
You want me to make a motion? Need one in public or not?
We are back in session. Our next scheduled board meeting would be February 9th at 7:00 PM. That would be the second Wednesday of the month. And I made a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, are we going to make any statements to the public? I just want to go on record, the elected public know that are sat here, that we don't plan to say anything.
I said that in the very beginning before we went into this.
Okay.
I did not plan on making any action.
Okay. I'm going to say something. As, I don't know, Mark, is this thing working?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Four years ago, when I got on the board, I was one of the skeptics. And it was evident when I first started, because when Lindy's contract was up for renewal, at that time, I talked with Mr. Davis, and I was not in support of a three-year. And we had kind of had, I will call it a gentleman's agreement, going into it, that we would renew it for a year, and we would make some strides in recommending what we would like to see. In hindsight, I'm going to go on record and say Mr. Davis was spot-on, because there is nothing that Mrs. Douglas can do to please everyone. And as my tenure as board president in 2020, I was asked by someone why I flipped, quote-unquote. And I kind of was taken aback by the question. And it wasn't that I flipped, because that implies that I had it out for Lindy to start with. And I never did have it out for Lindy, and I still don't. But dealing with the beginning of COVID in March of 20, I know for a fact that I was talking to Lindy four or five times a day, seven days a week, because that was ever-changing. The buzzword at the time, I think, was fluid. Everything's fluid. So you would make the good decision at the time, and tomorrow, the answer was not good, because something else had come to light. So then I got criticized for not sharing information, felt like I was controlling the information. And the fact is, any information that is, that anybody wants to know, is a short phone call away. Mrs. Douglas will talk to anybody that calls her. Now, when you guys call me, you might not necessarily like the answer, but at least you know that I, where I'm coming from. Same way with Lindy, you might not like the answer, but there's usually a reason for the answer. My time as board president, really educated and opened my eyes to what the superintendent of any school district goes through on a daily basis. They have arrows being shot at them daily, from all directions. The sad thing is, they also get arrows shot from the board. In light of all of that, I will wrap up my comments. I've struggled with this, on how to approach this. But at this point, I'm going to make a motion to renew her contract for three years. It might get voted down, it might not get a second, I don't care. I'm going to go on record and do what's right. We need to continue to keep this district moving forward. Okay? My girls now, as of last year, are all graduated and gone. They've moved on. I don't have, I guess, a necessary dog in the fight anymore. So what I'm trying to say is, I'm not trying to please people at this point. You guys voted me back in for four years, for better or for worse. I'm going to have a hard time holding my peace. And this is right, what we have done, in Jay's opinion, is 100% wrong. I'm going to ask that we, if somebody would second it, I'd appreciate it.
Motion to table.
But I want to have a second on my motion to vote.
Do you second?
Do we have a second?
Aaron seconded.
Okay.
You tapered his?
Sorry.
You tapered his?
No, he seconded.
I made a motion to table.
How's that going to work, Aaron? We got a vote, or we going to table it?
We have a discussion, and on the motion, on the, in the discussion, we have a motion to table.
When the public wants an answer.
Motion to vote first.
And that, so that brings it to the floor. That brings it to the floor, which brings it to discussion. Now, we have a motion to table, which then will go back to discussion. When we go back through this, when discussion is finished, we will first vote on the discussion, if it gets seconded. We'll have it, we will vote on the discussion, or the table, and then ultimately, the motion to rehire.
I don't know, is that right, Aaron?
What did you just say? Was that, what did you just say? You went into executive session. For what? You just discussed it. So vote on it. You know what the community wants.
I can, well, I cannot discuss what actually happened. I can tell you that that was not what was discussed. I don't know why everybody thought it was. That is not what was discussed.
I don't know what you thought we were here for.
I know what you thought.
One thing he said, that they were going into discussion to talk about evidently, somebody in the school has a problem. And they were going to talk about that, disciplinary problem. Am I right?
No, the evaluation, the compensation, Aaron, do you have those?
It's a long description that we have to read as one.
Well, they did not say it was that. They said the disciplinary action or something.
Yeah, those are, those are words that we have to use. The executive session for the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, demotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee or official. That's what we went to executive session for. We did not go to executive session.
But they couldn't hear what you were saying.
Of all the board meetings I've been to, the superintendent has gone into every executive session. And that's why I thought this board was doing something against Lindy, because she was not in the executive session. Because things that are decided for this school district goes through the superintendent.
That's why.
Except her contract.
All right, thank you.
And that's why I, that's why we all, that's why we all thought, that, that's why you're going into executive session, to discuss Lindy.
We have a motion on the floor. The mic is on. It is. I've asked, I don't know what's going on back there, sorry. It is as close to my mouth as I can get it there, without eating it. We have a motion on the floor, to renew and second it by Aaron. And we have a motion to table. Just to get it on the floor, I will second that motion and move it to discussion, other discussion items as on this topic.
About table?
About anything that has to do with the motion and the table. You made the motion to table, that we can talk about.
So what does table mean, what's the word I've been to? So what does that mean?
At least you come back the next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, jerk us around. You may not have to answer us now, but you'll answer us eventually at the ballot box. And that's either going to be on a laby, or come up for a lecture, or a recall.
We're just trying to be civil here.
Well, I'm trying to be civil too, and it's really hard.
And that's, I understand. And that's why I was very clear when I spoke.
That's why you have to talk a little bit again.
I do not plan on going, taking action outside of executive session. I stated that before.
You hire or fire, you got to take.
Exactly why I stated I do not plan on taking action after the executive session. Exactly why I stated I do not plan on taking action after the executive session. Thank you. Is there any discussion items on...
There's a hand there.
A hand. Yes. Mike Wagner, correct?
I just had a question. I don't understand, you know, people ask for answers. I ask for answers, and I don't expect one. But if you want a motion to table, which is fine, that's, that's a good thing, probably. But I would still like to know as far as the need to table.
I'm not ready to vote on it. I don't feel ready to vote on it tonight. I know people are...
What about December? What meeting that you've been to?
We weren't ready to vote on it. And I see that you're recording it, that's fine. We're not ready yet. And I...
That's fine.
I...
You have to know what's going on.
Yeah.
That's fine.
How long does it take you to be ready?
Please, please, let Mr., guys, please, please, please.
One at a time.
Please, one at a time.
That's fine that you're not ready to vote on it. But I guess Sally, myself, ask specific questions. What are things that are holding you back from that?
I can't say yet.
There's never a answer. There's never, never a answer.
That's...
Because it's personal, it's here.
It's not personal with me.
Would a petition help you?
It is personal, and you know it is.
We know, we all know.
She gave us bound on 20 things if he had problems with her professional.
And this would not be, ma'am, this would not be the venue for that. A public session, that's why executive session does exist. Okay? You are welcome to request an executive session for the next board meeting for board policy, and we're happy to discuss.
So I'm going to give credit where it's due.
All right.
That's why you're where you're at.
All right, so we have... So we have a motion to table. Discussion, and I ask for roll. I, it was just stated, we're not, there was no discussion to be had. I can, I second with Lucy, because there was no discussion about this topic.
We can't.
And it's not there.
That's okay.
You can not believe whatever you want.
If it's not about her, why would she not be in there?
I can't answer you.
It was exactly a session.
Somebody can answer, it's my answer.
I was going to say, Blake, you brought it up before, because Lawson called you out on it for bringing, for talking about stuff that happened in executives.
That wasn't executive session, actually.
So pass was fine.
Okay.
No.
Are we done?
Thank, do we have roll?
I'll talk afterwards, but we have...
We're on the table of the renewal.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
So first of all, I tell you, you people have created a hostile work environment. You two, Lucy and Josh, you created a hostile work environment for that lady right there, and she doesn't deserve it. I didn't have to come to work every day.
Sir, we have roll. And you're welcome to discuss afterwards.
All right, Aaron, you called my name, but what, what's the roll for?
For tabling?
Tabling the renewal.
Of the renewal of the contract. Mr. Collins?
On the motion to table?
Yes.
It seems pretty intent that there's a vote to be had tonight, so I guess no. I don't think it's the right choice, but I'll say no.
Mr. Ramsey?
No.
Mrs. Edis?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Motion fail.
So then we have the motion to renew her contract. Is there a certain number of years?
Three years.
Three years?
That's the standard for a second.
Roll.
Mr. Barnes? And Mr. Collins?
Again, I don't think it's the right choice for us to be taking this vote tonight. We have, I don't think it's the right decision for us to be taking this vote tonight. I don't, I'm sorry that you all came here expecting that this was going to happen. It was not on the cards, in the cards. So I don't know where it was brought from. And I apologize, you guys all had to come here. Pardon me? It's already been stated a couple of times why we were put here and by the ballots, and I've made my, my comments. My reviews are all public. I've made my public comments. This is not a forum to go back into that. That is one thing that hurts us. I really don't like even taking this discussion, or taking this vote, because it could, it then does become personal. It hurts her in the future. Because now she's going to have the potential for a stain on her record to make it more difficult for her. My vote is no. I voted no, coach.
Mr. Ramsey?
So I, I have a really hard time when we have a winning team pulling the coach. So my vote would be yes.
Mrs. Edis?
No.
And Mr. Regan?
The reason I've wanted to table this conversation is I don't think it is in the best interest of the district at this point in time to not have all the alternatives on the table to decide what is there. What can be there, what other options are available to this district to move it in the right direction.
According to statistics, we're moving in the right direction.
We're already there.
So why, I don't know why you'd want to change horses midstream. And why we don't get an explanation for why we want to change horses midstream. There's never any answers.
You don't want to change.
No.
I make a motion for adjournment. Second.
He better know.
You've got to vote one way or the other.
He did.
I did.
He did.
Well, speak up, we can't hear, and come back here.
We got, no. And I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Ramsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Edis?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
If people want to talk to me individually, I will, but I would not, not in the meeting.